Good morning, Chairman, we are now live.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Lincolnshire County Council Audit Committee. A special warm welcome to everybody watching at home on YouTube, Lincolnshire County Council YouTube. No fire alarm, it's been sounded this morning already, so we, any fire, we're going to be going out the back door, following our officers who know the way, obviously. Let's start with the agenda then this morning. We've got minutes of the Audit Committee held on the 22nd. Sorry, apologies.
Non-received, Chairman.
Thank you. Minutes of the Audit Committee on the 22nd? Okay, why am I not seeing that? Okay, sorry, okay, got it, yeah. Declarations of interest, anybody? No, okay. And minutes of the Audit Committee held on the 22nd of September 25. Any questions about that? Are we all happy with it? Okay, so proposer? Secundar? In favour? Thank you very much, unanimous. The first point, number four, on the agenda is the deep dive we requested on the High Needs System, and to receive a report from Martin Smith, Assistant Director of Children's Education, and which provides the committee with an oversight of the current High Needs System and alternative provision landscape within Lincolnshire, as requested by the committee. Martin?
Good morning, everyone, thank you, Chairman. So I'm pleased to be able to come to the Audit Committee today to provide some assurance to you around the High Needs SEND system in Lincolnshire. For those of you who are not familiar with the system, the system is highly governed by a number of legislative frameworks, including the Children and Families Act and legal guidance around the SEND Code of Practice. In terms of summary of the paper, the concept here is just to give you an overview of the demand that's happened over time, the strengths within the system in Lincolnshire, but also the risks that are presenting themselves. So there's a number of governance areas around High Needs and SEND. First of all, it is inspected by Ofsted and CQC, and the High Needs System, or the High Needs Partnership in Lincolnshire was inspected in February 2025. It highlighted that our High Needs Partnership in Lincolnshire provides clear governance and strategic oversight, with strong active stakeholder engagement with the Parent Care Reform and Lincolnshire Young Voices. We have an effective and specialist triage model for health services, and we have positive post-16 outcomes and expanding AP options within Lincolnshire as well. It gave us some clear pointers for improvement, which included improved quality of EHCPs, making sure that they were personalised and enabled effective transition planning. We were asked to look at, as a partnership, to reduce the waiting times for SALT and neurodivergent pathway assessments, and look at ways to strengthen early identification and support within schools and early years settings. And finally, to improve our accessibility of the local offer, which is a duty that we must provide, a platform for people to be able to refer to in terms of finding information and support for SEND. A potted history of the SEND system, these reforms that we currently work within were put in place in 2014, and they've been around now for 10, 11 years, and during that time, we've seen significant demand increases. So in 2022, we had 1,258 assessments for request, as an example, compared to 1,957 in 2024. If you look back over the whole of the period of the reforms, we've gone from approximately 2,000 statements, as they used to be called, to just over 9,100 EHCPs today. So we can see that demand has increased. In terms of performance, Lincolnshire has managed to perform really well compared to national in its decision-making timeframes, which we are guided by within the Code of Practice. So there's six weeks deadline, 16-week deadline, and a 20-week deadline. We have been running it this year at 76.8% of EHCPs have been completed within 20 weeks, and that's compared to a national of 46.4%. Within all of the needs within the SEND system in Lincolnshire, what we're currently seeing is a predominant increase in speech, language, and communication needs, social, emotional, mental health needs, and ASD, which is autism. In terms of mediations and appeals, we see a significant challenge, as can be seen across the country, around appeals and mediations to decisions being taken. And for the purposes of Audit Committee, it's probably worthwhile noting that the 6, 16, and the 20-week timescale, sorry, points can all be appealed by families and providers, and that poses a risk in terms of being able to meet that 20-week deadline. Also, the High Needs Block supports the young people who are excluded from schools, and we've seen an increase over the years, particularly after the pandemic, around permanent exclusions, although it is pleasing to note that the Partnership Board has seen a reduction in the last academic year of secondary exclusions. The main reason for exclusions is persistent disruptive behaviour. 63% of young people are excluded for that reason. So overall, as mentioned within the paper and in the summary, the High Needs Block is under pressure. The allocation, the grant from the Schools Block is 141 million, and we're currently forecasting a 25 million overspend. The main cost drivers for that is demand, increased young people in mainstream, increased young people in special schools, and due to sufficiency, young people who are having to attend independent, non-maintained placements. What we are doing within the local authority and through the ICB and our Partnership Board is focusing on those post-Ofsted priorities, looking at how to drive improvements in terms of quality of EHCPs, supporting children and young people through Quality and Effectiveness Advisors, working with schools directly to improve ordinarily available provision. As a council, over the years, significant capital has been invested to create more SEND sufficiency, and we are also embarking on our second, sorry, our new strategy, which is Better Belonging Lincolnshire, to reduce distant placements and improve inclusion through further special school expansion and SEND mainstream hubs. Those mitigations will manage some of the financial demand, but it won't absolutely remove that financial risk. So in terms of next steps, we are also awaiting national change within the SEND system. There was a white paper to be published in the autumn term, that's now been deferred until the spring term, which we think will look at different models and ways of supporting children with special educational needs and disabilities across the country, noting that it's a risk for every local authority, I think it's fair to say, in the UK in terms of demand, financial management, and mitigations that can be put in place. So I'll leave it there in terms of a summary, because obviously I assume you've had the opportunity to read the contents of the paper, and happy to field any questions.
Thank you, Martin, that was a very good report and quite comprehensive, interesting reading. Questions? councillor Davies?
Thank you, yeah, good morning, yeah, it is a good report. I think there are a few weaknesses, I think, from an audit perspective, that doesn't seem to be an awful lot of tying back to what the strategic risks are. So there's the slight element of so what, would be, I've added as a commentary to the whole report, a couple of specific questions, obviously very data-driven. In the past, looking back over some previous reports, there have been issues around the accuracy of data. Be keen to know how are we assured that the data you're presenting, both in terms of numbers and of finance, you know, the numbers of children, the finance numbers are accurate. Second question would be more about what controls are in place, and how are you managing those controls to push down demand, assuming you are. And then from a financial perspective, there is a paragraph in there with some bullet points. I think it would be useful to know, because you skip over it quite lightly, you know, DSG is going to run out of money. The question for your, maybe for finances, again, is where does that leave us if we do run out of money for this?
Thank you, councillor Davies, yeah. So in terms of the journey we've been on, as that cohort of young people have grown over the years, we've done a lot of work around making sure that we have a single view of a child within our data management systems. So in the past, we've been able to see a child's EHCP, for example, but what we've, and then separately to that, we've had a financial system that's tracked what the financial package is around that. We did a piece of transformation probably four, five years ago now, to move it all onto one system. So through Mosaic, through our platform, we've got care plans on there, the financial commitments, the new EHCPs, the keynotes of anything that's changed or happened when an annual review takes place. So we've developed a single view of the child with the distinct fields. What that means is that our performance team can pull the data accurately from Mosaic. We've also had a slightly unwritten rule, or quite overt rule really, around no spreadsheets. So we don't keep separate data sets or records, we just stopped using them and pushed them all onto Mosaic to make sure that we get that one single view of a child, but then that can also be reported as a strategic overview of what's going on. We have monthly data management meetings as well, to make sure that any errors within data sets can be corrected and picked up, or if there's any drift or delay in data recording, to make sure that we're, you know, in the best possible position to analyse what's going on. And then we've also, separate to that, but alongside it, use those data sets to inform the future. So where we've seen increased demand in certain localities or postcode levels, we've been able to pull that together and then forecast what that might look like over the next three, four, five years, and then align our sufficiency strategy to where those demands are. So we're putting the capacity in the right place at the right time. In terms of data sets more broadly, and working with other local authority areas, I think we've got a really good grip on our data compared to some areas. We might not like always what the forecasts say, or what it says that we need to manage or deal with, but it is strong compared to other areas that I think we've worked with over the last few years. And certainly, team managers, officers, caseworkers, and the head of service are really clearly using that data to support what's going on. In terms of the financial outlook, we work really closely with our finance colleagues, they're part of our Partnership Board as well. But we are currently aware that the statutory override is in place until 2027, which means that that deficit of 25 million and potentially growing, depending on demand, means that we are looking to not register that, and that's compliant. I mean, Michelle, you might want to comment more on that one. But until the statutory override is removed, the risk is identified, but there's a way to manage it. Is that a fair comment, Michelle?
Yeah, so I think, I think we've spoken about the statutory override as the government's way of saying we can just park this and not worry about it in our overall position of our general financial resilience. The problem that it does pose is that it's clearly cash going out the door, and it has an impact on our cash balances. So at the moment, it's relatively small compared to where most upper-tier authorities are. But we don't want it to grow, because although in accounting terms, we can just park it and ignore it as part of the statutory override, it is impacting on our cash balances, which obviously impacts on our overall position on interest earned on cash and things like that. And I know some authorities are getting to a point where they are suffering financially because they haven't got the cash balances to kind of manage as they would normally. So I think that's fair to say.
Thanks, Michelle. And then on the point around demand, so I think over the last four, five years, we've done a number of different strategies to be able to support better young people without the need to go through the SEND process. So we introduced ASKSAL, which is advisors around early intervention and support that you can access without the need for an EHCP. That's been really effective, supporting about 70 to 80 children a month to access a service or a support that doesn't require coming through the EHCP system. That's really positive. However, the monthly demand of people requesting assessments has gone up over that period as well. And we have been quite high at declining requests to assess. So about 60%, we agree to assess, 40% we say no to, that's about 20% higher than the national average. Noting that, that decision can be appealed. Unusually, new evidence or new information means that about 40% of those cases end up being assessed. We're in a line, around 95% for six-week decision-making process of progressing them. So we've supported and supported schools as well through the Quality and Effectiveness Advisors, who are targeting schools who are high referrers or high excluders, to be able to improve their quality of provision, to create better belonging for those children. Early days yet, but the signs are positive in terms of those schools that are working with the Quality and Effectiveness Advisors. We're seeing a marked reduction in requests for an EHCP, or a reduction in permanent exclusions. And I give an example, I won't name the school for obvious reasons, but there was a school that had 27 permanent exclusions last year, and the Quality and Effectiveness Advisor's been working with them since September, and touch wood, there have been zero exclusions, which is remarkable, because one AP place is about £40,000 off the High Needs Block. So early days, but we're really hopeful that those mitigations and interventions take place and support. The Strategic Board, the SEND Board, are monitoring all of these work streams, and we meet bi-monthly, and that includes health partners, local authority officers, to really double-check progress is being made on those that priority needs. If progress isn't being made, I chair the board, I do formal escalations. So if I feel that we're not making the necessary progress, I will formally write to another board, maybe within the ICB or within the Department for Education, to formally register my concerns of a lack of progress. So hopefully that gives you that assurance around the remit.
Andrew?
Thank you, Chair. You've given me assurance on a couple of fronts there. One is you have a very active board that's monitoring all these inputs, and you are prepared to escalate if necessary. And you've got a range of data. Now, Claire's going to do a deep-dive audit of this field, and it may be she will recommend to you further data sets, et cetera. And you've also said that this board has got all the key players, health, et cetera, in there. However, is it too late by the time they're in the school population? If the, particularly on speech and language and communication, if that's a deficiency found at five, six, seven, eight, et cetera, could it not have been found earlier? And is there some correlation, accidental or not, between the decline in health visitor roles and the assumed reduction in early years, I mean from birth onwards, support to families, that might be a preventative measure and a preventative stage of intervention that has not been fully seized?
Thank you, thank you for your question. So I think, first of all, our early years and health visiting offers are really robust and really positive in Lincolnshire, and our work really closely with the SEND agenda as well. I think what we've seen is not so much the four and five-year-olds, it's actually been nought to four, where we've seen that increase or reduction, if you like, in speech, language, and communication abilities. To manage that and to mitigate that as part of this agenda, our family hub offer has been really key in supporting that through the children's centres. An example of that recently has been around speech and language support being available one day a week within our family centres, so that the system can signpost to that early intervention and support. So you don't need an EHCP to access it, you can go and get some support through that service within children's centres and the family hub work. I think what we've seen is not so much needs, over the 10 years, we've not seen needs appearing later. What we're actually seeing is needs being identified much earlier between the nought to four arena, and then we see more within primary, and then we don't see many new needs being presented in secondary school age. But it is worth noting, of course, and I didn't mention it, which is my error, is that in the 2014 reforms, this system changed from a school-aged system, four to 16, to a nought to 25 system, which is also why, as the years have gone on, that cohort's got bigger, because you've got a larger age range really to support. I don't know if you wanted to say anything else, Heather, on the early years? Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, that's quite interesting, actually. It does sort of beg the question as to whether our education system has been sort of declining really a little bit, and a weakness in that, you know, that we can't actually, you know, help people at an earlier stage. And do you see any evidence of that?
So I think, really good question, I think it's a complex question. I think what we've seen is the reforms in 2014 for the SEND system, but we've also got to factor in the Ofsted framework for schools and that accountability level around standards and expectations. And some of the targets on data for schools has been significantly increased, which as a consequence, has meant that those children who may be not able to achieve that academic level now appear as if they have some underlying special educational need or disability, whereas it's always been the case that you've had a range of abilities within schools. But that has had a factor in it as well. And we know certainly one of the things that has the greatest impact on improving provision is Ofsted, recognising and looking for good practice of supporting children and young people. And as of the beginning of this month, Ofsted's refreshed framework is very much around supporting children with special educational needs and disabilities to maintain placements, to maintain belonging, acknowledging that they can make progress but might not achieve that high standard or high bar of academic outcomes. And so I think it'll be a really interesting period over the next 12 months to see how that moves forward. The government's also just recently released, in the last two weeks, the Curriculum and Assessment Review, and that talks a lot around ambition and standards, but also tailoring and supporting teaching and learning to ensure that children feel like they can continue and thrive. And I think as well, that it's worth noting as an Audit Committee as well, there is a much more knowledge out there in the system now. There are many advocacy groups that are promoting and celebrating what can be achieved through the SEND system. But also, the consequence of that is you can end up with people feeling that they need to be part of that system. And goes back to councillor Davies' point, actually. I think over the last five years, we used to see requests to assess with a comprehensive evidence base. We also now see quite a few of name, date of birth, but no information, and people wanting reassurance of somebody just checking that my child doesn't have an underlying special educational need, which is a sign of kind of where we've got to within the system now. But I think most of our schools, I will just kind of end on that point, most of our schools in Lincolnshire are low-excluding, really inclusive, and try really hard to support the children and young people of Lincolnshire. And it's worthwhile celebrating that as well, in that, you know, this is the system that they're having to work within. But Lincolnshire schools on the whole are really inclusive and supportive in meeting needs for children.
Thank you. councillor Ian Carrington?
Thank you very much, indeed, oops, thank you very much, Chairman. I just wanted to pick up on some of the points already being made, and I do find many of the things you've said so far very reassuring. I'm conscious of the fact that we are the Audit Committee Chairman, so I'm trying to avoid getting too much into the nitty-gritty of how we deal with the SEND issue, and more look at the risk management aspects. But it seems to me there are kind of, when we go back to the children involved, and they're the core of all of this, there are probably three cohorts. There are the kids who don't need SEND provision, call them regular, whatever, if there is such a thing as a regular child, I haven't met it yet, but the ones who don't need SEND provision, the ones who clearly do need SEND provision of one sort or another. And then we've got this increase in demand, which suggests that there is a third cohort of people who would kind of like to get, parents perhaps, who think it would be appropriate to get onto that, onto that particular sector. And I just wonder, when you were talking earlier about changes in the way our children are, the results of the way they're measured, are we seeing real changes in our children in the last five, 10, 15, 20 years? Or are we looking at changes in diagnosis and demand? And that leads me to two risks, and the work Claire's going to do may help here. The first risk, we obviously have to focus finite resources on those in real needs. So there's a question, A, operationally, how do we make sure that happens? But B, how do we assess and manage the risk of that focus being diluted? And the second one, and again, I'm straying toward operational things, but it is an audit concern, is there a further risk that we kind of lock children at an early age into a definition, which in the long term might restrict their life chances, rather than improving them? Not intentionally, but almost as a perverse outcome of providing additional care. And it's the child in the end which is the important thing, but also important is the level of resource we have as a council to do that work, and making sure that it's those who really need it. And we all know in this chamber, they're out there, making sure that they get such resources as we have. So it's how do we manage best those two areas of risk?
Thank you, thank you very much for your question. So again, SEND is a complex area, isn't it, to be able to translate into for the Audit Committee? So I think some of the issues around the current SEND system is that there are a whole number of different views and beliefs around what it should deliver and how it should deliver, and there is a perception, and you will have heard it from residents and in the public domain, around it being a constant battle to get what I need or what I want. We work really hard through multi-agency decision-making approaches, so no decisions made by a single professional, all of the decisions are made by representatives from the entire partnership. So you've got health views all sorts to be able to accept it. It isn't just a diagnosis model, it's a needs-led model. So as needs are presented, support can be achieved. But there is also something around expectations of what a system can deliver nationally, but also within Lincolnshire. We try as much as we can to invest in early intervention and support through a number of services, and they wouldn't be classed as overtly SEND-support services. It's more services that take account of SEND needs and, you know, family hubs we mentioned, how could they support when it's the continent service, how can that support, et cetera? However, if that statutory duty pushes more to the high-cost educational placement, that's where the spend will come. So we spend a lot of time trying to invest at the beginning and hold that investment there. The theory of trying to support and give confidence to families is one that's hard-fought and won. We've got really good relationships with the vast majority of our parents, with caseworkers, and we're really grateful to that constant dialogue. But as soon as we try and make it a dynamic system, I think is what you're referring to, putting support in when it's required, removing the support when it isn't required, is difficult to do, because with the 9,000 EHCPs, for example, we should be rewriting those EHCPs each year, we do about 82% of them. But that's 9,000 documents that need to be rewritten every year, personalised, tailored, high-quality, leading to the provision that's required. However, if it's not agreed by the three-way relationship, education, local authority, and parents, it's appealable, and there is a culture of as soon as you try to say it's done an effective job, it's made the difference, let's try and step it down. There's a general feeling of not wanting that to happen, and that's one of the main reasons why it goes to mediation or tribunal, is because agreement can't be sought. Does the system improve outcomes? I think the data says probably not. It doesn't improve outcomes in the current system, if you're measuring the right things, you know. So I think there is a reflection nationally, as well as locally, around what difference does it make? Or is it something that just makes people feel more... does it make or is it something that just makes people feel more assured and confident in what's being delivered by educational settings? But a lot of educational settings, if you speak to them, they see an EHCP as a vehicle to be able to get resource to deliver something, whereas the question could be, could it be delivered without an EHCP if the model was different? Would that be more efficient, more effective and provide better outcomes that could be dynamic because it's not legally binding? So I hope that kind of keeps it as a strategic kind of response to the audit committee but also builds in that kind of link with the operational challenges as well. Does that answer your question?
Through you chairman, yes, very much so, but I think you've raised some really interesting points there that perhaps going forward chairman, when we look in more detail at the data sets that we keep, perhaps we need more information, going back to that business of ultimate outcomes, because of course it's important to reassure parents, you know, who may be facing quite challenging circumstances. But ultimately, the alpha and omega is the outcomes for the individual child. And my concern is, A, that the system may not actually be serving them as well as it could and you've kind of confirmed that, but B, that we as a decision-making body have the relevant data so we can really judge that in order to help those children in their long-term chances. But thank you very much for your answer.
Thank you, Andrew. Oh, Ian, sorry.
Thank you. Just looking at some of the numbers, and I know Claire's going to be looking at the systems and the mortar thing, it's, I think one of the things that I'm reading at the moment is obviously the number of appeals, the success percentage of appeals, where we have things where we've had it appealed because insufficient information. And again, full disclosure, both my children have special educational needs and we've gone through the whole process. The data capture, if we don't capture the right thing in the first place and it's very focused data capture with the flexibility of capturing the extra information, the assessment of what success would look like for an EHCP, so if you're going to write an EHCP and say what would progress look like and therefore can we check against it, the ability to appeal it if you've articulated the success factors is a lot lower. Because if the answer is we haven't said what does good look like, well, good is obviously in a business sense as opposed to what success would look like for the individual child, it's harder to push back against that. I'm very aware that certain flexibilities are built into the system as well, so what the school is required to do, quite wide range vague, if I'm going to be so rude, statements and vice versa. So I think my question is more of an appeal to Claire and a clarification on the numbers on here, that we have to be really clear what improvement, success, even just maintaining looks like for the individual child. The systems have to be able to capture the data we need in a sufficient way that allows us to answer some of those statistics, because I'm looking at it saying, if you've got 100% overturned decisions in 2024, 98% were not doing something right. If it's already at that stage and you already know it's going to be overturned, there's already a problem. So what are we doing to prevent that? Where is our learning cycle coming in to mean that actually we're adjusting our approach? Does that make sense?
Thank you councillor, it does make sense. And for those of you who don't know me, I'm Heather Sandy, I'm the Director of Children's Services and my name place isn't up, so I apologise for that. Just to say, those figures around the tribunals apply nationally, so there is a lot of discussion about the fact that nationally, local authorities across the country lose 98% of appeals. The knock-on effect of that is what are we doing to prevent it is lots of things we don't go to appeal on, even though we wouldn't argue that that's the best use of the council's resource because we know we'll lose and therefore we'll be spending more resource at appeal in order to lose. So I think the appeal numbers and the rate at which the tribunals go against local authorities are not necessarily indicative of local authorities making the wrong decisions, although they are the wrong decisions in the eyes of the individual case for the individual court. And that is going to be subject to the consideration in the national reforms because you're right, in any legal system for one party to lose 98% of the time is unsustainable. The risk is if we sat at this audit committee and said we didn't challenge when we thought things were wrong, then you wouldn't think that was a good use of our finances either. So we work really hard to capture the learning and I understand in your case, you've had individual experience of it, most families don't go to tribunal, most families have a successful journey through our SEND system and I understand the frustration there is out there around SEND. I think that if you talk to any of our caseworkers, they live and breathe that every day. But in terms of keeping in perspective what Lincolnshire's doing within the tribunal system, what's happening nationally and what the courts are telling us, it's really important that we're really clear with this committee about what we can and can't influence and what is a national issue and what is a Lincolnshire issue. So our tribunal rates are not a Lincolnshire issue, they are a national issue and they'll be part of that reform agenda that's coming through. What is a Lincolnshire issue is deciding when we do defend and when we don't defend because every case we defend has a price tag and if we lose 98% of them, then we need to make a really strategic decision about are we going to defend. We also recognise the human cost for the families, for the caseworkers. It's not a nice arena to be in, it's not how children's services normally work with our families. So I think it is, as Martin said, a really complex, all of these issues are really, really complex. And when we take them from a strategic audit perspective, they're really difficult decisions that we have to make and that's why that robust governance that Martin's talked about is really important.
Oops, sorry, could I just come back on that point? There's two things, number one is, by the way, it wasn't a terrible experience we went through as a family, so I just want to, don't worry, I'm not being growly. The second thing really is, within all of these is, we were discussing in the pre-meet, there is the preventable stuff and the non-preventable stuff. So if your system automatically creates a weak point, which we know there's the reforms and everything else coming in, in terms of avulnerability, there's managing within that vulnerability, preventing that vulnerability etcetera. But there will also be that, I'd say that's the key thing for us is the risk mitigation to the maximum that we can and that decision-making and the transparency of that, that's the key thing for me from an audit committee perspective that says actually is, of those, I hate to use the word avoidable, but the answer is actually is minimising the avoidable to the extent that we accept what's, but do we have the information to make sure we're constantly improving our ability to reduce the avoidable? That's really what I'm looking for, if that's okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you Chair. It is important for our assurance, I suggest Chair, that we, and I'm getting assurance from the depth of understanding of our senior officers in this mega, mega complex field. And, you know, we are making as decent a fist of managing this challenge in Lincolnshire as almost anybody. But I want to move on to a curiosity about seven or nine years' worth of age cohort that has not had a mention yet and that is post-16. But the responsibility's there and of course you can see the logic of that because if a young person is going to drift into inactivity, is as likely to do it between 16 and 18 and 19 as any time and once there, it gets harder and harder to rectify because you don't have formal school mechanisms or attendance requirements etcetera. And I've also got some interest because I had 36 years in further education and 18 as a college principal, so, who had no learning support assistance when I started and had 60 of them when I finished. And I felt we did a decent job for a cohort, but this was all pre-EHCPs and I'm intrigued at the low percentage of EHCPs for post-16. And I'm also like to hear from the specialist officers, how they work, bearing in mind that compulsory education runs out soon after 16, how you work with other agencies and colleges directly and the health service to build on the intrinsic motivational benefit of vocational education. What we did in my college was, we turned a lot of students into very productive and fulfilled and achieving vocational students, even though they'd had a very, very poor school experience because the curriculum just did not meet their needs. So talk to me about the post-16 cohort please, because the opportunity to add to the workforce rather than to add to the inactive cohort is substantial between 16 and...
Thank you, yes, absolutely right. So in terms of that post-16 cohort, I think what we've seen over the years is a development really of that broad offer at post-16. So if we think around the last five years, supported internships have really grown and provided employability opportunities for young people with special educational needs and disabilities, the QUAD being an example of one here. I think what's also really interesting to note is there's a real shift at 16 years of age for young people, of those who are in specialist provision, a lot of them tend to go to mainstream post-16 provision, which is, you know, should be accoladed and applauded to our post-16 settings, that they provide that breadth and balance of curriculum that can meet need and tailor in support. What we have also seen is a number of young people, and it's a carefully managed process, where they do age 17, 18, but then also continue through that pathway of employability or qualification. There is a caveat to that though, that sometimes we have to manage, that you can find that some young people basically are repeating a year again and again. And there's a fine line between how many times you repeat the year before, you know, it's a bit, you know, it's not exactly motivational to do three years of the same thing and still not be able to secure it. We've also seen an increase in young people who want to exit the education system and go into apprenticeship and employment directly outside of the SEND system. So we do see an increase yearly of EHCP closures at the 18 years of age. But what I would be able to say to you as well is that over the years, we've seen an increase in the number of young people, young adults with SEND who have taken a variety of pathways. So we've had examples of children who have been looked after, who've got an EHCP, who've gone on to study a degree at the university, high functioning autism for example, and have brilliant outcomes through it. So there's a variety of pathways that are coming through. We transition plan really effectively, so 12 months before a child's going to finish key stage four, we start that transition planning of where would you want to go, what are your aspirations, what do you want to do, these are the available opportunities and courses in your local area. And that has meant that most young people have stayed on going through the system, which is what the reforms were about, you know, better belonging and keeping things going. That said, some of the costlier placements, because they can be quite bespoke, can be very expensive, can also have a transport implication as well, because it might only be available at a post-18 setting in the south of the country, so it becomes a residential setting etcetera. So all of these positives also come with a manageable or unmanageable risk that we have to be aware of. But yeah, I think your point there is we see it as a nought to twenty-five sector, the population has increased, but continuity has increased. That said, the same challenges of, we need to close the EHCP now because it's not making a difference, is equally as challenging. People still would want to keep it and maintain it for as long as possible. So I hope that gives you some reassurance around that post-16 up to twenty-five landscape.
If I could just add further, are you getting the right buy-in and the right partnership with post-16 providers? Particularly FE colleges?
Yes, yeah, definitely. So through the chair of the Colleges Network, we have a good dialogue. I think we have, I will just say, we have really good relationships with all settings in the county, post-16 universities, early years settings. The one thorny topic that every sector will say is about funding, they will all say, you know, we're happy to meet need, but we need more funding, we need more funding. And obviously, one of the duties of the local authority is to try and maintain a high needs block that's efficient and effective and affordable. And that sometimes means people won't be satisfied with the level of funding, but we do benchmark really carefully the level of funding against others.
Thanks Chair, and also just to add, you know, we have those good relationships, we're also really impressed by the work that the post-16 colleges do. So children who needed quite a bespoke package in mainstream school are able to thrive because of that vocational offer, because of the mix of curriculum that can be offered, because of the flexible nature of that post-16. We do have a cohort of young people who really struggle with the transition and so we have a provision ourselves, a post-16 provision called Inspire You. And the aim of that provision really is to help children bridge across into post-16 provision. So they might go to Inspire You for some time and develop some skills and then transition into a mainstream college where they can go on to a more mainstream pathway for adulthood. And the Inspire You college, which Lincolnshire County Council runs, has bases all over the county and does some excellent work supporting young people either into college, into a supported internship or into employment where that's appropriate for them.
Interesting, just for my clarification, so post-16, do we see the education needs moving to more advanced education? Do they have that capability?
I mean, Martin will correct me if I'm wrong. So I think there's a whole range, mostly our children with SEND aren't going into higher education. We do have some who we support into higher education, but mostly it's about working with them. So they go to post-16 and then it's about working with them on that really meaningful pathway to adulthood, so understanding what the aspirations of that young person are, what the aspirations of their family are. It's really important that they start to think about where do you want your young person to be at 30 and 35, when they're much younger? Because actually, if you want your young person to be able to be in paid employment and to be living independently, then we need to think really carefully about that pathway. And if they can move away from a very highly specialised bespoke pathway to a more flexible pathway, they can begin to learn that independence and that's what our colleges are amazing at, is really supporting these young people to blossom into independence in a way that sets them up well for adult life.
Very good, councillor Roberts.
Thank you Chair. First of all, Heather and the team, I've obviously come across this better belonging in OSMB, once again I want to say what a fantastic plan you've got to try and solve everything. It's all about child outcome, but obviously it's going to make a big difference on the budget, so well done. Right, I've just got this question, again, I know obviously it's the audit committee but it kind of is linked. So with these new hubs, do you have to have an EHCP plan before you can go into the actual hub inside the school? Or is there some sort of situation where you may have a child who you think may have high needs and you will place them in the hub, which then you can assess them a bit more to work out whether or not? And then if they're not and they're okay, because it might be a phase or only a small bit, that they can go back in again? That's the first question, thank you.
Thank you councillor Roberts, yep, so in a mainstream hub, although hosted within in a school, the local authority will be placing children, young people in those hubs with an EHCP that supports us with our sufficiency duty, our stat duty. As we've co-designed this with schools, what we've done is set it up so that there is specialist support in terms of teacher, two TAs and a pastoral worker as well as some other auxiliary support staff in the school. To be able to create that expertise and specialism within the school site, one of the benefits for the host school is that they can flexibly add up to three to four young people into those spaces. So we'll be able to place eight to 10, but then they will also be able to support three or four of their own children by allowing them to access that hub. And the model with the hub that's really important, it goes back to that independence part, is that isn't about being separate or isolated within the mainstream school, it's about having the specialist provision that you can access, engage with, but then you can still socially interact at playtimes and lunchtimes or if there's an event on in the afternoon, a one-off dramatical event, you could be part of that. It's more of a fluid, dynamic approach which, from our Young Voices group... It's more of a fluid, dynamic approach, which, from our Young Voices group, who, many of whom went to specialist provision over years gone by, said that's the bit that they would have loved to have been able to do, not just go to special school, but still be able to engage in different parts of a mainstream provision, so that they didn't feel different. So it's a combination of both, but we will place EHCPs and schools will be able to access some support for those without.
Thank you, yes, what I thought, because again, it just means that you've got flexibility, because that's what you need. That's great. Another question is, it's the one, I suppose, it's the elephant in the room, really. Parents, because, I don't know, and you can tell me if this is true or not, that when you obviously have a child that's got a need, quite a complicated need, that child is at home a lot. And of course, they go to school, and they have the really good care there, and they go home. Is there something, and if there isn't, it probably ought to be, where the parents are also getting some sort of training how to deal with their child? Because if they are already on a high-needs block, and they are already problematic, then having the parents, they'd probably want help, that's the first thing. They think the only way of getting the help is by getting an EHCP plan. So, I don't know if there is, and if there isn't, perhaps it's worth looking into whether or not it's worth having. And parents don't like to be told what to do, and they think they're not a bad parent, but some may actually think, please, help me, I can't get my child to sleep, I can't do this, I can't do the other. Please help. Is there something extra there for parents to try and help?
Thank you. So, I mean, Martin will chip in. I think we have a whole raft of stuff available for parents. So we've got the stuff we have generally, and I always say this every opportunity, if any parents struggling with any of the things you've just described, pop to your local children's centre. The local children's centre is there for naught to twenty-five for parents with SEND and can provide advice and signposting and support. And then throughout the lifetime of a child from pre-birth, we have involvement through our health visitors, through our maternity hubs that we've got in some of our family hubs. We've got our wider early years offer. So there's lots of support for families out there. And specifically for families with children with SEND, we have, there's parenting classes, there's support available to them, so I'd encourage them to connect with their local children's centre. And when you were talking, councillor Roberts, you talked about those with really quite profound difficulties and disabilities. And we have a children with disabilities team, and we have an escort team, and we have targeted positive activities. So we have a whole range of support for those with the most complex needs to try and ensure we're alongside families and supporting them, because we know that even, you know, those who are most confident about parenting, experience extra challenge when their child has disabilities. So it's about being able to support them.
Thank you.
And I would just, to echo that, I would just highlight and celebrate the work of the Lincolnshire Parent Career Forum. So that, they are part, Cora Lee and John are part of our Send Out partnership. They're the voice of parents. They do an annual survey of school settings, providers and parents. But also, as a parent care forum, they are a wealth of knowledge and access to parent-delivered, parent-run sessions. They also do a week of SEND, which Cora Lee, I'm sure, would want us to mention in terms of the brilliant work that they do, which is a full week, days and evenings, with workshops for parents to raise awareness and information. And the Parent Care Forum has got really good membership. Over 4,000 parents are part of that. They've got a Facebook page as well. And so I would just mention that to Audit Committee. If you've got families who are looking for support, that's a whole host of support. I think if anything, there's a raft of support that's available. And part of the inspection process around the local offer was just reflecting on how we can communicate that and translate that and paint the picture of it, that level of complexity in an easy and accessible way through our local offer. So that's part of that work stream as well.
Thank you. Could it, could it, any chance you could provide the details of that? Because I think, I've had the odd resident contact me about it, and I've contacted, Heather, help! And, I wish you'd been great, by the way, but sometimes it is literally, they must want help themselves, and they may not know about this. So if you could let us know with a pamphlet or whatever, that would really help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sounds like we need an emergency call line to call people up. Thank you very much. Any further questions? Okay, so the recommendations of this report is the Executive Director of Children's Services asked the Audit Committee to review the contents of the report and seek assurance around local arrangements within the national contacts of the high-needs system under significant resource sufficiency and financial pressure. Are we all happy with that? In favour? Yep. Okay, that's passed. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thanks very much for that very comprehensive report. It's a good job. Thank you. Next, item number five is an update on the audit accounts, and I believe that's Claire.
Thank you, Chair, and good morning, everyone. This report presents an update on the progress made to date on the external audits of the annual financial statements for twenty-four, twenty-five for both Lincolnshire County Council and the Lincolnshire Pension Fund. This comes in the form of a year-end report and auditor's annual report prepared by KPMG. The paper also outlines the proposed audit fees for twenty-five, twenty-six, as issued by the PSAA. Sophie and Fran from KPMG have kindly attended this meeting today and are happy to briefly talk through their reports and to answer any questions you may want to raise. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. So we have three reports on the agenda today. I will speak through the first two, and then I'll pass over to Fran to speak through our final report. So if we start with the Lincolnshire County Council year-end report to the Audit Committee, and that is for the main financial statements, not the pension fund. So it's quite a long report, so I'll talk you through the key features. So if we go to page thirty-five of the pack, we have highlighted the key changes to our audit plan. So one thing we have identified is that, within the year of audit, actually, IFRS sixteen is no longer a significant audit risk or other audit risk. And the reason for this is actually, we noticed that management had performed a really robust assessment to understand the impact of IFRS sixteen and the completeness of the leases that were included in the balance sheet. We actually identified that these were immaterial. So due to management's robustness in preparing that assessment, we didn't identify a risk this year. If we move on to the following page, we have a list of outstanding matters, which is on page thirty-six of the pack. So what I would like to say is, at this point of the audit, we're exactly where I would expect us to be. And I would really like to take the opportunity to thank management and Claire and Amanda for their work in assisting us to date. We are almost finished with our work, and I think that's reflected in this report, but we do have a few outstanding items, which I'll talk through as we go through the committee pack. So if we move through to the significant risks, which are highlighted on page thirty-seven of our pack, page thirty-seven of the pack, moving through to valuation of land and buildings. So we identify this as a significant risk within our audit plan, which presented earlier in the year. And this is basically due to the significant value that the balance, that it has on the balance sheet position, and the underlying complexity that is required to value the land and buildings that the council hold on their balance sheet. What I should say is that our work is outstanding at the moment, but that's only a few outstanding queries that we have with the valuer, who's been incredibly helpful in assisting us to date. We haven't identified any unusual assumptions or anything which would indicate a material misstatement. So we're happy with the progress we've made to date on that. One thing I should note is that we haven't identified a controlled efficiency, but what we have said in the body of the report is, we do understand that management goes through a process of understanding the assumptions that underpin the valuation of land and buildings. But because at this moment in time, it doesn't have the specialisms in the financial team to challenge those assumptions robustly, we do just draw this out as a controlled efficiency. But this isn't, this isn't different to what you would see on any of our kind of audit reports that KPMG present. Our second significant risk is around the valuation of pension liabilities. And again, this is very, very similar to the valuation of land and buildings. It has a significant place in the balance sheet of the council. And to get to a valuation position takes a lot of work and a lot of complexity to understand the assumptions that underpin it. So for example, mortality assumptions. Our procedures are substantially complete, which again, is great work to date. So thank you again to the team for their work on that. We have highlighted the assumptions underpinning the pensions valuation, which is its own page later in the pack. And we are pleased to say that they were balanced compared to the standard KPMG range. We have two other risks, which I'll pass to Fran to talk through those risks, and then she'll pass back to me to talk through the remainder of the report.
Thank you. So our third significant risk is in regard to management override of controls. So professional standards require us to treat this as a significant risk on all audits, because management has the ability to override controls and manipulate financial reporting. At Lincolnshire County Council, our planning identified that the general ledger system does not enforce segregation of duties of journal postings, which increases the inherent risk. So in response, we didn't rely on controls, but instead performed procedures, including using data analytics to examine all journals posted during the year, and selecting those meeting high-risk criteria for detailed testing. We have assessed accounting estimates for potential bias, including valuation of land, buildings, investment properties and pension obligations. And we've reviewed significant or unusual transactions, which are those outside the normal course of business. So the lack of enforced segregation remains a control weakness that we do report for transparency. However, our testing to date has not identified any indicators of management override, inappropriate bias in estimates or unusual transactions. And then lastly, we have another audit risk in regard to investment property valuations. So the council holds investment properties valued at around a hundred and nine million, which must be reported at fair value under the SIFRA code. This area involves significant judgment, unlike valuation of land and buildings, reliance on external valuers. So our audit procedures have included assessing the independence and expertise of savvles, who are the appointed valuers, reviewing instructions issued to the valuers to ensure compliance with the code, testing the accuracy of data provided to the valuers, and challenging key assumptions used in the valuation process, and evaluating the adequacy of disclosures around estimation uncertainty. Similar to lands and buildings, management review controls over valuations remain limited due to the inherent subjectivity and the lack of in-house valuation expertise. However, our work so far indicates that assumptions applied are reasonable and valuations appear appropriate.
Thanks, Fran. So that kind of concludes our financial statements audit. So if I move through to the value for money. So included on page forty-nine discusses the work that we do to ensure the arrangements in place at the council achieve value for money. And this is one of our responsibilities as your auditors. So our work is ongoing to date, but we haven't identified any indicators of poor arrangements. What we do seek to look at is look at the three distinct kind of items, I suppose, and that is financial sustainability, governance, and what we call the three E's. So we look at each of the three domains, and we perform testing over those to ensure that the council are achieving value for money. So you can see in the body of our report that for the three E's and for financial sustainability, we didn't identify any significant risks of weaknesses or any weaknesses. What we should note, however, is that we have identified a significant risk of weakness in the governance arrangements regarding procurement. So within the body of the report, we do note that your internal audit function presented a report with a number of findings over the procurement process and the consistency applied to the documentation of that process. Our testing is ongoing in regards to this, but what we have performed is a walkthrough of that procurement process with your procurement team. And we have sample-tested five procurements that happened in the year. What I should say is that we haven't identified any indicators that inappropriate procurement activity had occurred. But we have raised a recommendation to just note that we would expect consistency in this process, particularly around how the documentation is recorded and retained. If we move through to page fifty-seven, we just confirm our independence. So we do note here that KPMG does perform work for Lincolnshire County Council in addition to the audit. However, this work is what you would expect to be prepared by the auditors and would be consistent if you looked at other local authorities within the country. We have noted that the fee to us is insignificant when you look at our, the fees that we charge across all the work that we do. And the work is performed by a different team to the audit team. So we do not consider there to be any independence risks. If we move through to page sixty, we have our uncorrected misstatements. So we've identified two uncorrected misstatements in the year, which management chose not to update. You can see in terms of value, they're actually quite small, and one of them is effectively just balance sheet to balance sheet. So the first is around the classification of a cash equivalent held by the council. Again, the value is very small when you look at the council's balance sheet. But what we did identify is that the council had a cash asset or a cash equivalent asset, which was being held in short-term investments, which we actually thought should have been a cash equivalent. So whilst that hasn't been changed, we have highlighted that in the report. The second is around refcus spend, which has been recognised by the council. So as part of our procedures, we sample-test your refcus spend. One item that we selected was spend which had been applied to an asset which was held under IFRS sixteen, so is actually on the balance sheet. We challenged management, and we believe that as you have, you have the risk and rewards of that item or that asset, that you should actually be capitalising that spend as opposed to holding it as refcus. But again, you can see the value is relatively small. If we move to page sixty-two of the report, we have our controlled deficiencies. So again, we're on the theme of refcus. When we were undertaking our testing, we identified spend that had been classified as refcus when it should have been capitalised, as it related to an asset that was, that was a school under the control of the council. What we did identify as part of this process is that the council has slightly different processes in terms of verifying the assets that are held on the balance sheet when you look at schools compared to other assets. So we have raised a recommendation to ensure that the list of schools held by the council are complete and accurate and verifiable. I will pause here for any questions on that first report before I move on to the pensions report.
Councillor Davies?
Thank you. Yeah, outstanding matters, page thirty-six. I don't know about anybody else, but I would have thought at this stage, nothing should be outstanding. And I note elsewhere, and you've mentioned it, what your colleague did during your discussion, that you were waiting for some revised processes to come back from the internal team. It does feel like that some of these things have been going on for too long. I don't see, understand, and I don't think it's appropriate. And I don't think we should, as a committee, Mr Chairman, accept that they're still outstanding. In terms of some issues into detail, page thirty-seven, where you talk about the valuations, always going to be contentious. I think it would be useful to present some scale there, or for us to understand, you know, when you look at, what does that, what's the so what impact if we are valuing incorrectly? And I also wanted to congratulate you for one of the most confusing phrases I've ever read in the English language. And I'm going to use this one next time I'm back late from the pub to the current Mrs Davies. To date, we have not identified any underlying information that could not be agreed back to supporting evidence. I think that's wonderful. And I do think it represents a bit of an issue throughout the document. That, you know, the guidance from SIFRA is that these type of documents should present some clear, easy-to-understand, plain language summaries. And I'm not sure why, kind of get your head around it, you dig into it, it makes sense. I'm not sure some of your recommendations do. I've also got some, a couple of queries on controlled deficiencies, if I may, Mr Chairman, just very quickly. I notice, particularly the first one, which strikes me as quite serious, in terms of the refcus, there's no management response. I think that clearly there should be, because they either agree or don't agree. And I think a timeline should be in here as to when they're going to do this review. Because after all, the scale of educational properties the council owns is quite significant. And again, I think it would be really useful to understand what's the impact, the so what on this in terms of, you know, some narrative around how, what the scale of the discrepancy could mean, or the differentiation would be very helpful. Thank you.
So I'll take those in turn, and please let me know if I've missed anything. So in terms of the outstanding list, this, we have this outstanding list to be completely transparent. So if we are missing one item of documentation, we would have it on our outstanding list. And that's not because we necessarily think that there is an issue, but it would be silly for us to then come back to you and say, on that one item, we have found something that we would like to bring to this committee. So it's a way for us to be completely transparent. But what I should say is, we are three, more than three months ahead of the national deadline. But what I should say is we are three, more than three months ahead of the national deadline and we have no concerns over meeting that deadline and we would hope to be signed pre-Christmas, which is a month ahead of where we were this time last year. So.
For me, it was more a committee comment, because you're the recipient of those delays. I think, I just don't, I don't think there should be outstanding, Mr Chairman. A couple of these, these aren't new things, they're not fresh things. You know, it looks to the layman that maybe the authority isn't taking this audit process as kind of seriously as it should. Would be my feedback that I think we ought to give as a committee.
I agree with that, but this is not the final report yet, is it? So we've still got a time to go to complete it, yeah?
No, that's absolutely right. It's not the final report, so you will receive another report from us. I should just comment here that the Lincolnshire County Council team have worked extremely hard in getting us the information that we've asked for. However, to use a phrase that I've heard a few times, a jigsaw is a thousand piece puzzle. So it takes an awful lot of work of your team to make sure that they provide us all 1,000 pieces. In terms of the team not taking it seriously, again, I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily agree with that. They take it very seriously. And in some circumstances, the outstandings may not actually be because of the council. It may be because Fran and I and our wider team have had to consult wider or we have to look across the piece to our other local government organisations. So actually, I don't necessarily think that it could all be attributed down to us waiting on information from the council. It is very much a partnership when we perform our audit procedures.
Anything further? No, okay. Ian.
Thank you. My specialist subject now as well. Couple of quick bullet points, and some of this is aimed at KPMG, some of this is at Michelle. Because she'd be upset if I did. On the unadjusted errors, can I just clarify on the refcus stuff? Is that an extrapolation rather than the actual amount?
No, that one is the actual amount.
And that's the full total spend?
That's the full total spend.
Fine, okay. So I just wanted to make sure, because sometimes when I get that, you get both, so I just want to be completely clear. Again, obviously, I'm with councillor on this one, just to actually understand how that happened. I think if that's a misclassification, understand the control procedures in place, that's fine. I'll let Michelle come back on that one. The cash or cash equivalent, more a case of doing a short term overnight deposit with Bedford Borough Council as a process as much as anything else. Why we did that, is this a regular occurrence? And if so, what are the controls around that, please?
So if I, if we just try and work backwards. So the treasury, the overnight cash and cash equivalents. I think part of our treasury strategy says that if it's a short term loan to another council, we've treated it as a short term investment.
I'm good with that. It's more a case of why we did it.
If we've got it in Barclays, it's cash. And it's just a different view about what that means for us. So in terms of our overall financial position, it makes no difference. It's just, it's just how we categorise it. So we've just kind of gone with the audit recommendation about it should be a cash equivalent. And we'll bear that in mind when we're doing our treasury strategy in future, so.
I'm comfortable with it. Michelle, actually that bit, I'm the least actually of my concerns. It's a case of why are we giving the money out and as in why we put in deposit with them as opposed to the treatment. I could, sorry, KPMG had a kick out less, but.
So the lending to other councils is a significant part of our treasury management strategy and how we manage our cash. So at any one time, we would look to have no cash in anything that's not earning interest for us. And we would look to lend to either or deposit with money market funds or lend to other councils. And that's a part of the approved treasury strategy and quite normal practice for us. So just something that was identified as part of why are we treating it that way as a categorisation, if you like. In terms of the refcus, I think Amanda and Claire can probably pick me up if I'm saying this wrong. But this particular instance is where we've got voluntary aided schools on our balance sheet. So they're LCC maintained schools. But maybe with the ownership of the diocese and that we have to treat them slightly differently. And I think this was just one particular accounting entry that's not gone in the process of the way that we would expect it to. Claire can maybe explain about what controls we put in place to help with that going forward. Just before she does that, councillor Davies mentioned about the valuation, the impact of the changing of the valuation, I think. So this is effectively, the responsibility of us is to make sure our assets are correctly recorded in terms of their value in accounting terms on the balance sheet. The responsibility of KPMG is to make sure that we've done that. Clearly, the finance team don't have RIC surveyors in them. The council does and we use the RIC surveyors that are part of the LCC team now to do the general property savills. Obviously, we've got a contract with them, recognise that they are better placed to value the farms, which is the investment assets. It's the county farms estate effectively. And we, we, some of the backwards and forwards is we go backwards and forwards with the valuers and KPMG will go backwards and forwards with their valuers as well. So Sophie's team won't be RIC surveyors either. There won't be pension specialists. So Sophie's already said some of the time delays, the backwards and forwards that we both do to make sure that we're recording this stuff accurately. So hopefully that reassures somewhat. And Claire will just talk about the refcus thing.
Yes, I think when it comes to refcus, we will revisit the training supplied to the finance business partnering teams and remind them when we treat something as refcus as opposed to capital expenditure. And we will also review the refcus expenditure within our team in more detail to ensure that anything's been captured that shouldn't going forward.
Chair, can I, Chair, if you could be one last thing? Because Michelle and the team know, I usually do beat them up quite a lot over this stuff. Can I just say thank you? This is a good job, well done, both to you guys and the KPMG team. I have an appreciation for exactly how hard it is to get this stuff over the line and the complexities. And I think to get to this stage, this time scale is doing very, very well. So thank you very much to the team.
councillor Roberts.
Thank you, Chair. To KPMG, I don't know your names because they're not on there. I know one's Fran, I can't remember your name. Just a quick one really, just so I can get my head around the best value audit and how deep dive you go. Because I know of a case, and I won't go into detail because I don't know the full detail. But there's a case of an office building that we actually own that we let out. It's been discovered that we've been basically been charging all the occupants 15p kilowatt hour rather than what we pay, which is 30p a kilowatt hour. So basically what's happened is the management of this particular building hasn't been managed very well and they've not increased the charges because the profit was so low, they couldn't work out what it was and why it was until they realised that we were subsidising the electric because it hadn't been reviewed. So my query on that, the reason for mentioning it is just to work out how deep you go regarding contracts and things like this to make sure that, your obviously job is best value, to make sure that we are getting the best value out of our assets. Thank you.
Yep, no problem. So I think that particular issue would possibly only ever come out in our value for money arrangements work. So what we look at when we do your value for money assessment is we look at the overarching arrangements that are in place. I.e. do you have the appropriate teams in place, the appropriate governance structures, the appropriate policies? What we would then look to do is if anything had been highlighted out of that review, which would require a deeper dive, we would then perform additional procedures on that. So an example is the procurement issue that I raised earlier. We would only really look to assess something further if we thought it was going to be material for the council or if it was pervasive. So we would see procurement as pervasive as it runs through every single element of the council. So in terms of specific contracts, it's unlikely that we would do deep dives into those specific contracts. However, if we considered there to be a material impact of specific contracts and not complying with your own internal policies, that may cause us to look a little deeper.
So just on that specific item, the business units are part of the economic regeneration portfolio and they might have specific policies around how they recharge tenants because the purpose, the overarching objective of those units is to encourage economic growth in areas where the market isn't providing it. So as Sophie said, their role is to make sure we're following our processes and policies that we've put into place to manage the organisation. But that particular example might have a reason for doing that because of the purpose of the building to start with.
Thank you. One last question. How do you value a castle? So savills are obviously value on a castle. I've been in the kind of industry for years, it's not something I could do. So how, because obviously we own the castle, so part of the portfolio is the castle. How do they value a castle? And if they have valued it, how much is it worth? I'd love to know.
So savils value the farm estate, which does have a value. They don't, they don't, so the castle's a heritage asset. Usually the valuation will be involved in what we've actually spent on it and what it's costing us and what it might cost us to insure. So those considerations, it's usually about what we've spent on it, to be honest. And the balance sheet value is usually a reflection of that, not what, not what we could sell it for because clearly it's not for sale, so.
Very good. It's Sophie and Francesca. You call yourself Fran, don't you? That's right. Councillor Ian Carrington.
Thank you very much indeed, Chairman. I should imagine the value of a castle is very much related to just how strong the besieging forces outside of it are. But hopefully Lincoln Castle will stay very much unsold. Yeah, thank you very much indeed to Sophie and Frank for the KPMG report. I wanted to pick up on a point that you made in that report, just as a general observation and ask you and officers about it. And that was procurement. And it is absolutely right, we are local government, we are spending public money. We have to be absolutely A rigorous and B transparent about how we do our procurement. However, having said that, local government procurement is a very, very complicated area. In the previous council, when we had a slightly different committee structure and I was chairing Environment and Economy, we actually discussed the importance of trying to make local government procurement accessible, particularly to small and medium enterprises. You know, we have a really vibrant small business sector in Lincolnshire. And it can be very, very intimidating sometimes for companies like that to go into complicated frameworks or whatever the other, the other mechanism should be. So I guess my plea to all concerned is that, yes, we have to be properly legal and open and transparent and the document keeping has to be right. But at the same time, we need to be careful that the audit and governance tail, for want of a better phrase, doesn't wag the dog of a procurement system in a way that makes it yet more inaccessible to local small businesses who really need their chance to get in as well as those larger enterprises which are of course geared up to this kind of thing. How you actually find the balance between those two things is very much down to our offices and our advisers like KPMG. But I do think that it's an important point that we all need to be aware of. Thank you, Chairman.
It's a very good point, actually. I think it's possibly something we might look at in the future for a deep dive, you know, that's definitely something. Any more questions, anybody? No. Well, I mean, thanks to KPMG, to the whole.
Sorry, we've got, we've got two more reports to come. Apologies. And one thing I didn't pick up on, and apologies councillor Davies, was around our documents and making sure they're accessible. That is a piece of feedback we will take away because I do understand that a lot of this is audit speak. And for those that have worked in audit for many years, we probably don't notice that it's not accessible. But I will definitely take that away and take it to our technical team. So thank you very much. If I move through to our second report and then, as I say, I'll pass to Fran for our third report. This is our pensions findings document. So this has already been reported to the pensions committee, so I won't spend a huge amount of time on this. The work is substantially complete and this report seeks to discuss the risks that we identified. So the first risk and only significant risk within this report is management override of controls. And the findings are very similar to the ones discussed by Fran in our council update report. So primarily, the way we test management override of controls is journals testing. So whether management has processed any journals that would look unusual or would would indicate management override of controls. So this testing is largely complete and we've not identified any indicators of management override of controls. But again, we have noted that because the pensions arm of Lincolnshire County Council uses Business World, there is no segregation of duties within that ledger system. So again, in theory, any individual could post a journal directly to the ledger if they had access to the system, I should say. Not everybody. If we move through to page 78, we discuss the risks over assets. So we've not identified a significant risk, but we have identified an other, an other risk area. So we identify different risks depending on the level of estimation uncertainty within assets and they are categorised by level one, two and three, with level three having the most uncertainty surrounding it. Our work is complete for level one and two assets, but our work is ongoing for the level three assets. And again, I think that indicates the level of back and forth you would expect when there is so much uncertainty underpinning specific assets. What I should say though is we haven't identified any indicators of material misstatement over any of the assets that we've tested. On page 83 is the risk around actuarial position. So similar to the council audit, we use our own actuarial specialists to evaluate the assumptions that underpin the actuarial assumptions and we found these assumptions to be balanced. We have our schedule of misstatements on page 90 and I'm pleased to say that there were no reportable misstatements, either corrected or uncorrected. And then moving on to the following pages is just the controlled efficiencies. So again, as I mentioned, we have identified a controlled deficiency around the ability to post journals directly to the BW ledger without approval. But again, that's something that we've seen across both reports. I will pause here for any questions before I pass over to Fran for our final report.
councillor Locke.
Just to ask the obvious question, there's obviously a bit of a theme running here with management override controls. Question is what controls are you proposing to mitigate this? It's probably more of a councillor question, isn't it?
So in terms of the system, that our Business World system is our financial general ledger. The controls that are already in the system is that the, any individual that has access to the system has a role in the system and the only people that can actually process journals are those people with a finance role. So that will apply to the LCC team and the pensions team. So it's not just anybody who's got access to the system, it's anybody who's got that specific access to the system. And just to point out that the section 151 doesn't have access to that part of the system. And if, I probably do have access actually, but I wouldn't know how to do it. So to just provide that reassurance, the role in the system controls who's got access to it. What it doesn't say is if you're posting a journal, you've got to get somebody else in the system to press a button to say it's fine. I have no plans to change that because it's a risk that actually to try and change in the system is quite difficult and complicated. And most ERP systems don't have that workflow check and balance in the system. And the audit team will continue to raise it because it will continue to be something that could possibly be done. We have controls outside the system, as does the pension team. And we need to just ensure that those controls are adequate and can be evidenced by the audit team when they come. So the systems controls are outside of the system as opposed to in it. And that's not going to change in the immediate future. And we believe those controls outside the system are adequate to mitigate the risks. Hopefully that's, it's not an ideal situation, but it's, it's well.
No, thank you. I mean, yeah, obviously as a capability or lack of of the system. But so in the final report that KPMG are going to deliver, hopefully you will confirm acceptance of those other controls.
Yeah, exactly. There will always be a risk and we will always raise it as such because management override of control is a pervasive risk for every financial statements audit. I think what we do know in both this report and the council report is that the council does have controls in place which would prevent inappropriate journals being posted. However, it's not documented in a way that we could ever rely on it. So we will continue to raise this as you would see in probably 90% of KPMG final audit reports.
What we can do to help support that is to make sure it is documented and can be evidenced if we, if we need to feed that back to the auditors. So we can take that away.
Thanks. Yeah, I'd look forward to seeing that.
And the next report?
So the final report is the Auditor's Annual Report, which provides an overview of our audit work for 2024/25. It's largely everything that's already been discussed. So as previously mentioned, at this stage, the final financial statements work is still ongoing. And we haven't yet concluded on the whole of government accounts. As opposed to note today, we haven't issued any public interest reports, advisory notices or statutory recommendations this year. Our value for money. Our value for money review covers the three areas as Sophie's already mentioned, so that being financial sustainability, governance, and improving economy efficiency and effectiveness. And we've not identified any significant weaknesses in these arrangements. The council delivered a £29 million surplus on the provision of services. It's maintained its financial volatility reserve, and it's increased its general funds. Although AMAT reserves have reduced, but that was as planned. Governance, governance arrangements, including risk management and counter fraud processes, were found to be adequate with strong performance reporting and scrutiny in place. And again, as previously discussed, we did identify one area of concern around procurement practices where internal audit reported inconsistencies of documentation and contract register completeness. But our testing hasn't found any evidence of inappropriate decisions. But we have raised a recommendation for the council to adopt a consistent approach to contract documentation. Overall, the report concludes that the council has appropriate arrangements in place with no significant weaknesses identified, and only the one recommendation relating to procurement. Any questions?
Councillor Davis.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it's a great report, I think, very positive. My one query, and I think it's for the LCC team, and a perennial bugbear of mine, is on page 106, the ability to forecast surplus and deficits is brought into stark relief here on the table on the right hand side of the page. And I just wonder whether or not, is this, what is driving the, these uncertainties and this differentiation? Is it political decision making? Is it market vagaries? What, why, what is the variation so significant between planned and actual?
So I think, I think there's a, there's different elements to this, isn't there? So on the service side, we are reliant on a number of heads of service and budget managers working with the finance team to provide forecasts around what their, their out term will be and what their financial performance will be. And clearly, most people are on the side of caution in that respect. So, so often, things don't come out until a bit later on in the year, because people are generally quite cautious about forecasting underspends particularly. In terms of funding, we, we get notifications quite late on, and we get pots of funding quite late on. And there's an element also of how we best utilise our resources to ensure that ongoing resilience within the council, so use of contingencies, any use of reserves. We would want to minimise, so to, to kind of get that insurance going on. So I, I think there's just a number of moving parts. I, I think what's more important is generally what we've witnessed and what we are reporting on all year is generally, there's aren't, there's not surprises at the end of the year, like suddenly there's a service that's massively overspent that we hadn't forecast during the year. We've not, not, I don't think we've seen any of that. So I, I think that, that's a kind of ongoing process in that we, we, we try and make sure that we're focusing on the high risk areas and making sure that those risk areas are being reported accurately, and we are planning for them in terms of future planning whilst we're seeing those risks coming through. But it's, it's always difficult to, to nail it down, because there are a number of moving parts. I think the key thing for us is that we, we haven't overspent on any of our service areas as a whole. And that's, that's kind of meant that we've budgeted prudently, but as, as well as we could do, I think.
Yeah, I have a lot of sympathy for that view, but at the same time, I think unless your financial forecasting is accurate, you're not presenting decision makers with a fair view of outcome when they are making decisions. And I agree, it's best, always best to err on caution. But I think that to be, to be significantly different from year end would feel like that scenario that could be improved. My question for KPMG would be, is it normal for local authorities? Are you, are you used to seeing these kind of financial discrepant, discrepancy is not the right word, but it's not a discrepancy, but this, this challenge with predicting out year end outcomes? Do these numbers look and feel normal to you, I suppose would be my question, compared with other authorities of a similar size?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't say it's, it's dissimilar, and I would say it's probably relatively similar to what we would see in the NHS as well. So putting it into the wider kind of like a public sector context. As Michelle said, it is very difficult for the council to, like, hit the nail on the head to the penny or the pound. Particularly when you're looking at such a large budget. I think LCC spend north of a million, a billion pounds a year. So being able to forecast within these margins is, is where we would expect. And colloquially, not colloquially, anecdotally, yes, we have seen other local authorities which aren't as effective of budget forecasting and budget monitoring.
I hope that answers the question. And I guess the process is quite black and white relatively, so it's not easy to always talk about the grey aspects of where we sit, yeah?
I, I think there's a number of factors that influence any kind of financial position. I think one, one piece of reassurance we can give is we've, we've, the council's obviously invested in a new IT contract. They're doing quite a lot of work with services about how we use technology better and our digital capabilities better. One of the key things of those is, is how we use the data that we've got better to do some of this forecasting. So not just joining up the, you've spent X amount in three months, you're going to spend X amount in 12 months, actually linking that in with, you've got rid of X tonnes of waste, and that means this for your budgets. Or you've got this many children taking transport, and that means this for your budgets. And, and trying to digitalise that or automate that a bit more. So bringing some of the intelligence back to, to help us with some of that forecasting. So it's, it's a, an ever moving circle. That's probably not the right analogy, but it's, it's, it's something that's being developed continually. So hopefully, we can continue to provide assurance around the forecast that we're making.
Thank you. Ian.
And I was just going to say to councillor Davis as well, from my experience in public sector and private sector, the predictability here of timing and the accounting for timing and cash and various other things also puts a little bit of a handbrake on to some of the decisions as well. And the third party element of how much comes in on the demand side. And all businesses have challenges. I have the same issue in mind, we just happen to be buying businesses and that completely distorts things. I would, I would say in my years, we haven't done badly. I know that sounds like death by pale comparison. But actually, given the number of moving parts, there's always chances to do it better. And I think the use of IT will, and that predictability will enhance it. It's never going to get perfect, but actually, it, it, we can do better. But it's, it is, for me, my experience, one of the better public bodies in terms of at least getting a sense of it. And I've seen it done badly so many other directions, where they have misforecast to the extent that they do over spend unexpectedly, and we get a lot of 11th hour activity in the wrong way. So damned if you do, damned if you don't.
I think the other thing just to mention is where we, so we've got a leadership team that's very much involved in the whole process, and they get monthly updates on our forecasts. And what you might see is in quarter one, we'll, we'll report that we've got a pressure somewhere. But then there'll be actions put into place to try and mitigate some of that. So it's an, it's an ongoing process. The key thing for me is we're not getting any surprises that we weren't expecting. So that, that's the key measure for me. Sometimes we can't control some of the metrics as well, so you can't stop people bringing waste to the, you know, putting rubbish in the bins. You can do a lot of things to try and encourage that stuff, but ultimately, you know, weather dependent can suddenly impact on our costs in things like road maintenance, flooding response and things like that. So we're, we're subject to some kind of those things, and that's where our contingency is important, which we've maintained.
Very good. Any more questions? Okay, so the recommendations on this report are that the executive director of resources recommends that the audit committee considers the information in the report and the, in the appendices, and identifies any further information or actions that may be required. Are we all happy with this? Yeah, okay, thank you. That's carried. Thanks very much to the team, that was very good. It's a brilliant report, as normal, I particularly don't always like the graphics, it makes it so much easier to understand. Very good. Thank you. Next up, we are looking at the Risk Management Process Report, and that will be Mr Kevin Lane.
Thank you, Chair. And good morning, everybody. Just about morning still. This risk management report provides an update on the strategic risks from risk owners and the work to date of the risk management team as well. There are currently 12 strategic risks on the risk register, which is a decrease of four risks at this review. That's because we de-escalated four risks from strategic down to directorate level for management and oversight at directorate meetings. So the outstanding debt risk, due to assurance assessed as substantial at the last review, you'll remember from the last report, they've had improved oversight and recovery processes and a decrease in the debt amount outstanding since the risk was added to the risk register a number of years ago now. The recruitment risk, due to lower recruitment requirements and decreased vacancies, the risk will now be represented and mitigated in appropriate areas across multiple risk registers where they see challenges in hard to recruit areas. At the education travel risk, which has been de-escalated to be mitigated and monitored at place directorate level, and that's due to decreased forecast future overspends following successful implementation of multiple controls, including close working with children's route optimisation and improved procurement mechanisms, and an improved procurement system, I think, as well. Strategic contracts risk has been de-escalated to resources level, following adequate assurance assessment by the risk owner at the time, and a decrease in the number of high risk contracts. The main points to the overview at this risk register review were the market supply children's issue, which still remains the only issue on the strategic risk register. Mitigation is now going to be overseen by the strategic board, which is chaired by the chief executive, similar to how the controls were put in place for the education travel risk as well. And it is now part of a children in care education, the children in care improvement programme. Alongside future capital investment and conversion of firehouses, other controls will include the trial of a bespoke fostering scheme and increased support for families so that children can return back into their care. There is currently wraparound care and increased oversight for children who are, continue to be replaced in unregulated placements for very short periods of time whilst they're waiting to placement. The other risk to look at is the command and control centre risk, which is all around the procurement and successful implementation of the command and control centre at LFR, at Lincolnshire Fire and Rescue. They previously had a go live, but it did not work, so they reverted back to the previous system, which you'll remember as one of their controls in the deep dive was to procure an additional 12 month extension of the previous system. So that control enacted, operated effectively, there was no drop in service. And they've since then had another go live. It went live in market raisin, and it is now live at Netlem HQ and rolled out across the board. It currently is in the second week of hypercare by the supplier to ensure it operates effectively. But they do still have that extension if they need to fall back again. And that cost for the further extension to put in place was being borne by the supplier as well. So they've recouped their losses for that, the failure of the first implementation. We are currently working with adult care colleagues to begin drafting and identifying and fully fleshing out a working age adults' risk, which will focus around the increased demand and cost within the working age adults' cohort of people who draw on our care. And moving on to the risk work to date, we are currently refreshing the e-learning with support from learning and development team within the council. And we're currently progressing with risk appetite. So far, we have worked with CLT to identify appetites based on risk categories, so for example, financial based risks, a category per, an appetite per category. And now in the background, we're starting to use the risk data that we hold to interpret this into a boundary level of these risks are over the score with the limited assurance, therefore it is out of appetite, we must escalate this risk. And we'll be able to start reporting on that, around which risks are in or out of appetite, accepted as in and out of appetite. And that concludes the report. Oh, aside from horizon scanning, there are a number of topics which should draw your attention to on the horizon scanning report. As usual, there always includes cyber and the economic volatility at the moment. Thank you very much. Happy to take any questions.
Andrew.
Thanks, Chair. De-escalating school transport. That's a success story, Chairman. About a year ago, we invited the team leader to come along and suffer a grilling and deep dive. And there were progress indicators then and promise of even more. It would be useful to know what worked and how effective they were. So I'm suggesting a paper, Chairman, as a follow up from that officer, to say, you know, we, we were most impressed by the challenge from the audit committee. He needn't say that, but this worked, this didn't work so well, this worked very effectively, because there may be general lessons and or specific lessons.
So maybe we can minute that, and we'll say, request a paper to follow up on that, yeah? Ian.
Can I counter that point, Andrew? It's not often that we disagree, but I disagree on this one. I am, from a de-escalation point of view, I, I think the visibility to Andrew's point is absolutely correct. And I'd like to know what's worked and what's, what hasn't worked. But from a risk, all we've heard so far is continuing pressure on educational travel. Increased demand on that, the route optimisation, everything else, that's fantastic, that's compensatory measures. I think it's just giving the council, sorry, the committee, a, a useful example of when something is de-escalated, the robustness of de-escalation on something that's quite so high risk. Because the, the pressures are going to continue and are increasing. And it's, I read that as less overspend as opposed to no overspend. And therefore, actually, it's still potentially going to overspend and still have increased activity. So I think it is a success story to Andrew's point, I completely agree. However, my confidence needs to be great now showed me why that was the right thing to de-escalate. It may well have gone down to the lower level. Are we comfortable, if we're seeing this as a risk register, that the right steps have been followed to de-escalate it? And actually, will end up giving us a lot of confidence if you can show us properly.
I think that's complimentary, Chairman. Yeah.
Yeah, agreed, it is complimentary. Yeah. So maybe we can just look at this a little bit deeper at the next meeting then, yeah? Councillor Davis.
Thank you. I mean, on home to school transport, I remain to be convinced that taking off the risk register is the right action. When you look at the way the cost is escalated, and yes, the transformation programme has saved four or five million pounds, but when you look at the fact that it's probably in line to treble over there a 10 year period, I think that feels very soon. Not to discount the good work that's been done. So more information probably needed. My question really is, on the controls, it's great to look through the risk register, long list of controls. Cursery glance would say that all the controls are fine, some are measurable, some are unmeasurable. Everything's going tickety-boo. My experience of any large organisation, that isn't the case, is how do we know that all of these controls have been implemented and are being monitored and run correctly?
We do tend to have quite challenging discussions, but I don't go away and then personally individually check their controls, to be honest. Normally, if I did have any discrepancies or any uncertainty around whether I was able to confirm whether, if it looked like it wasn't being an active control, I'd push back and challenge. If I still didn't agree, I would likely then go to audit and go, this is probably a good place for an audit. Does that answer your question at this point, or more detail?
It is an answer, isn't it? I mean, I, I just concerned that there's an awful lot of activity going on here that some big ticket issues rely upon to be dealt with. That doesn't feel like a very robust way of monitoring the controls. Because unless the controls are being implemented, you may not know for some time, and these things sit on the risk register and don't disappear. Is there not anything, I don't know, maybe Claire could recommend, is there something more that could be done to ensure that, you know, that some of these quite detailed things are actually being done? Is there, is there a management structure in place so that eventually, you know, a head of service is responsible for this being done, or an AD or something?
There is that process, because that's the combined risk that comes to this committee in February. So that's all the exec directors come for you to question them on anything on the, on the strategic risk register. So that's your opportunity to ask the in-depth questions about the application. The risk management role is to review the evidence that's put in front of them, not to suggest whether it's actually being implemented or not. That's part of that wider governance process which comes here at the next meeting.
I kind of hear you, but I'm not sure in one meeting we have the ability to sign off on every single control being done. I mean, that's, that would be, I mean, there are dozens for some of these risk registers. Surely, somebody in the organisation can give us assurance that, I mean, forgive me, even my glasses are struggling to read them without zooming in. You know, that the control provision here, the loss of provider process enacted where required to ensure service continuity with lessons learnt built into the process. I can't, I can't sign off on that, I don't know. I can't, I can't sign off on that, I don't know. I'm not convinced a conversation in a two or three hour meeting with an executive director can sign off on that control. But it's clearly measurable, it's clearly important, the impact is high and it's a corrective control. I mean, we don't, we don't know who owns that from this. Are you saying the owner is the executive director?
So that's part of the combined risk process that the risk team go through. So they go through header service, they go through assistant director, up to exec director. So the exec director signs off those controls to say that those controls are in place and in their view are working, which is why we have that final step in the controlled risk process where the exec director comes here. Does that kind of make sense with the lower steps that take place as part of the strategic risk review that happens three times a year?
Well, I understand the words you're using, yes, but I struggle to believe that in February we'll have a meeting and I'll be able to ask, you know, particular for this risk, what I'm looking at here, adult social care, you know, am I going to be able to ask Martin a particular question about one of these controls and he's going to be able to give me certainty that that's in place? Is that, that seems to be what you're suggesting, that's the check mechanism?
In theory, yes, because ultimately it's gone through our internal processes for that sign off by the exec director to say, yes, these are mitigations that are either in place and working or are due to be put in place and this is the impact we expect them to have.
Very good. Any further questions? Counselor Roberts? No, okay. A good report, Kevin. Just the takeaway then to review this transport situation, look a little bit deeper into that maybe next time, that's a takeaway for you, yeah? The recommendation is that the committee notes the status of the strategic risk facing the council, seeking assurance over the adequacy of the council's governance of risk and control environment. And makes recommendations, any further scrutiny recommendations or actions, the risk management activity and confirms if any further actions are required. Are we happy with this paper? Yeah, it's unanimous then, thank you very much. Next, we're going to look at the review of the financial regulations and that will be Michelle Grady.
Thank you very much. So this was just a short paper highlighting some changes that we wanted to make to the financial regulations. So the financial regulations are part of the council's constitution, which is basically how we run the organisation. There are some updates we wanted to make to the financial regs before we went into budget setting, basically to reflect changes in codes of practice and best practice items that we should be implementing, just to put a contemporary definition in there of a budget and to simplify some of the language around, particularly around our viroments. So just for audit committee to make any comments before that goes into council in December.
Thank you very much. Any questions? No. So the recommendation of this is that the committee considers the content of the report, endorses the proposals, details and recommendations that full council and the leader of the council as appropriate, and approves the amendment to the financial regulations and consequent amendments to the budget definition, the constitution has detailed and tracked changes in appendix A and B. Do I have a proposer? And a second to? Thank you very much. And a vote please, those in favour? Anybody against? No, that's unanimous, thank you. Finally, we are looking at the audit committee work programme and that will of course be Claire Goodenough.
Thank you, Chair. So this is the overview for the next two meetings of the items that will be brought to you. I will speak to Democratic Services about adding that follow up report from education transport to the February meeting. We usually keep the February meeting lighter because we like the largest proportion of that for being focused on the risk combined assurance and your opportunity to question the exec directors. But we've got quite an action packed March meeting with lots of things to get in at the end of the year for starting the subsequent financial year. So I think if the committee's happy with that, I'll put that in the February meeting and that will change for the next time you see the work plan. Any questions at all?
Anybody? No, very good, well done, Claire. Counselor Davies, sorry.
Do we just need to put something on about school transport as that's come up today as to when that will come back for a deeper dive, to understand that de-escalation?
Sorry, I thought I said that. That will be added to the February meeting.
No problem. Okay, so the recommendations of this report to review and amend the audit committee's work plan, ensuring that it contains the assurance areas necessary to approve the annual governance statement. Are we happy with this? Very good, unanimous. Thank you, everybody, for a good meeting. The work has been brilliant, well done as usual and enjoy the rest of the day.